All right, uh, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the District of Brown Deer School Board Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at six oh three P M. Uh, verification of public notice, meeting has been publicly noticed. Verification of a form, we have six of our seven board members in attendance this evening. You see your line? All right, so we have all seven board members, thank you very much, uh, in attendance. Um, approval of the agenda, we do have, I'd like to make one adjustment to the agenda. Items five J and K, I'd like to be able to move those up to A and B. All right, those are not ones that actually need um, a vote, these are informational. So again, J and K, I'd like to move J to A, K to B, okay? And then we'll continue in that same order. Uh, board members, any questions in relationship to the potential change of the agenda? Okay, all right, uh, approval of the agenda, would someone like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Dr. Vito, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, motion has been made, we have a second.
Dr. Vito, I will second that motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson, motion has been made, seconded, any conversation and or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor would raise hand and or eye.
Eye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries unanimously, seven two zero. And the reading of our mission statement, together with our families and community, we will inspire students to be passionate learners, creative thinkers, and innovative leaders who enrich our world. All right, so next, let's go on to our district communication, Dr. Kelsey Brown.
Good evening, board members and members of the community, um, just a few uh, items that I have been working on for the week. Uh, I would like to inform the community, uh, I have set aside time, um, I'm calling them superintendent office hours. Um, so I have set aside time, uh, one of the buildings for um, teachers to be able to um, reach out and um, set up fifteen, we have meetings fifteen minute interval, and basically, teachers can share with me whatever um, uh, issues or concerns they might have, or celebrations, or things they would like for me to know. Um, I've had the opportunity, the elementary school was last week, um, I met with ten teachers at the elementary school last week. Um, the middle school, um, only one teacher signed up, and I met with her. And then the high school will be on Thursday, and so, um, one person has signed up, it's a high school so far. Um, office hours are in the building, so um, I meet them um, where they are, and they've been going really well. Um, we have been quite busy at the ca- cabinet with interviews for uh, we are down to two finalists for our buildings and grounds, um, director selection. Uh, and we hope to have a uh, name to you by the special board meeting in June, with a um, July first start date for our selected candidate. Ms. Robinson, I attended the North Shore Rotary Meeting. I'm with the Fortam, um, every other Monday. Uh, met with um, Mark Louts, Barb Fleming, and Kathy Stetner regarding uh, what we will, what the plans are for moving forward with the Education Foundation, and you will hear more about that this evening. Uh, attended the seventh, eighth grade band concert, that went really well. Uh, had a meeting with um, two lobbyists for S W S A, which is a Southwestern um, uh, Student Alliance Association, where um, I have been instrumental in um, proposing a bill for the state of Wisconsin, um, to take to the floor in the fall, um, for an alternative pathway to licensure for teachers. As we all know, um, the teacher pipeline is decreasing over time. Um, Dan Penotl came and met with Kevin and I a couple weeks ago, I pitched the idea to him, and his response was, great idea, let's go punch it on paper and see if we can get it to the floor, to the assembly in Madison. Um, so we're working on that, um, that will be an opportunity for us to capitalize on um, uh, some of our peer professionals in the district who work really well with our children, and then individuals who may have a bachelor's degree but not necessarily a license in education. So, we're trying to think of some real creative and innovative ideas to increase the teacher pipeline. Uh, we've been waiting uh, for an angel to come down and increase the pipeline growth, and the angel hasn't shown up yet. So we believe, um, superintendents and I believe we need to be creative and innovative. So we'll take it to Madison, I probably will be going up, um, to testify, um, regarding this particular proposal, uh, or this bill, and we'll see what happens, so I'll keep you posted on that. Um, attended equity team meeting at the elementary school, um, with the parents, so um, who have concerns. Um, Tyler Burkard and I, some village members, we all met, and so what you all should be prepared for in the near future is the potential for a polling site to take place at the elementary school in twenty twenty four. Um, so that will require a potential change in our instructional calendar, so be prepared for that. Um, attended family literacy night, uh, dressed up in my tiger uniform, uh, and read a bedtime story to our students. And then our final PD day was um, celebrating our retirees and all of our staff members who um, have been with us for thirty years plus, so we started by in five year increments. Um, and so we celebrated everyone in the field house, had lunch, um, that went really well. And um, also attended um, our junior and senior prom at the Fox um, brewery in Mequon, and it was a beautiful event. Um, our students were amazing, and um, they were all just handsome and beautiful. Um, and then finally, I will be taking a vacation day on Friday to wrap all of it. So, if you have any questions, um, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Board members' questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Kelsey Brown, for letting us know that, and well deserved uh, vacation getting ready to come up.
You're actually vacating.
Yeah, don't do mine, don't take stuff with you.
Right. Yes.
All right, so now, let's go on to our next item, where we have so many wonderful visitors in our attendance this evening. Our district showcase, Dr. Kelsey Brown.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Vito. Uh, we would like to recognize uh, individuals who have uh, just shown a extreme dedication and commitment to our school district in a myriad of ways. Um, and so what I'd like to do is start out with our Teachers of the Year. Um, the School District of Brown Deer is thrilled to announce the Metropolitan Milwaukee Alliance of School Black, of Black School Educators has recently honored three exceptional teachers from the School District of Brown Deer with the prestigious Teacher of the Year recognition. Please join us in celebrating and congratulating Alicia Kinder from the high school, Tiffany Bates from the middle school, and Tali Datta from the elementary school on this extra extraordinary achievement. Their commitment to educational excellence is a testament to the incredible teachers we have here in the School District of Brown Deer, and they were celebrated about three Fridays ago at the Wisconsin Center with um, educators from all across the state of Wisconsin. So we are very proud of them and look forward to what is yet to come. I see Ms. Datta, I see you on, would you like to say a few words?
Um, yeah, no, thank you, Dr. Brown, um, I think it must have been a really hard choice, because I see colleagues of mine working, you know, going above and beyond every day. So I'm sure it was a really difficult choice, but um, thank you for the recognition.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you. It is Ms. Bates, I can't, I cannot see who's on, is she on?
She is not.
Okay, and what about Ms. Kinder?
No.
Okay, all right, so, so we will, um, we do have certificates for each one of our um, awardees, and they also receive the nice plaque uh, at the MAXI event on that Friday. All right, next, we'd like to um, talk about Fine Arts Night. Um, it was a hit, um, if you did not get an opportunity to come through and see all of the amazing work our students were able to display as a result of our, our fine teachers. Uh, we are delighted to recognize the exceptional Fine Arts Team consisting of Mr. Penny, Mr. Schmidt, Ms. O'Connor, Mr. Brownfield, Ms. Garing, Ms. Heinrich, and Mr. House for their incredible efforts in organizing a captivating evening of performances, interactive activities, and exhibitions. Recently, our Fine Arts students and our dedicated teachers joined forces to create this spectacular eve- evening. The level of talent exhibited by our students was a testament once again to the hard work and dedication throughout the school year. Our teachers' commitment to nurturing creativity and fostering artistic expression has made a profound impact on the lives of our students. We extend our sincere gratitude and congratulations to the entire Fine Arts teacher team for their outstanding contributions to our school community and for a job well done. And I do see Mr. House is here with us, Mr. House, if you want us to wave so everyone knows who's watching. And do we have anyone else online? Uh, I do not see anyone else, I do have your certificate, Mr. House. All right, next, we have our, we didn't tell them either, for surprise.
Hold on, I have a question for you, Mr. House, is it a way like, you know, I saw a lot of great artwork up there, are, are the kids trying to potentially sell some of the artwork as well, too?
We'll talk about it afterwards.
You feel me, for real, seriously?
All right, next, we have our Education Foundation retirees. So, we would like to express our deepest gratitude and admiration to Barb Fleming, and Scotty. And Dr. Pusker as exceptional members of the Education Found it, Foundation of Brown Deer's Board. What I didn't know is when I came to Brown Deer, you all had just started a year before I got here, so I did not recognize that. Um, and thank you so much, but your dedication, your tireless efforts have significantly impacted the Brown Deer School District. Through your remarkable fundraising endeavors, these individuals have raised countless dollars to support the educational needs of our students. Your visionary leadership led to the creation of the Wall of Inspiration, which serves as a testament to the achievements and aspirations of our alumni and our community members. Your commitment to building strong relationships within the community has furthered the mission of providing the best opportunities for Brown Deer students. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to Barb, Kathy, Art, and Mr. Yachi for their contributions and support. Thank you for everything you have done to make a positive difference in the lives of our students and our entire school community. So if Kathy and Barb and Brad would stand up?
Can I do a shout out here? Okay, this shout out goes to Durinthea Robinson, because Durinthea is the board representative to the Ed Foundation, and she, my husband and I came down with COVID for the first time, and I was worthless on the scholarship committee, and without Durinthea, it would have just been so much more difficult. She has sharpened up the rubric and made things flow, and we are deeply appreciative of that.
Thank you very much, and you will have an announcement tonight as well, right?
Oh, yes, um.
Hold that thought, hold that thought, let's get through this, and then, Dr. Vito will come back to you all, okay? Um, next, we have the Brown Deer Way Team at the elementary school. Uh, leaderships in the, with the Brown Deer Way Team have been provided by Mackenzie Wellnax, Nicole Nuss, and Raven Wilson. You all have found success by focusing on positive lessons, including the Brown Deer creed. Be responsible, be respectful, and be honest. The team provides students with incentive incentives for good behavior, creating a culture of success and encouraging students to take responsibility for their actions. But it's not just about the incentives themselves. The Brown Deer Way Team knows that effective behavior management requires a partnership between teachers, staff, and parents to ensure that everyone is on the same page. You should know that the Brown Deer Way Team does release their podcast, where you will hear more about your, their experiences and insights into how the program works and the specific incentives they use, such as rewards for meeting behavioral goals. So Ms. Wellnax, Ms. Nuss, and Ms. Wilson, I would ask that you all please stand and be recognized. If I have anything I'd like to say, please feel free to do so.
We do, um, so first, we want to kindly thank um, you all for this recognition tonight. Um, this year, we've accomplished and established many positive initiatives and traditions for our students and for our staff. We have aimed to create a behavior system that is bias free, collaborative, research based, and critically reflective. Um, so we, oh, really appreciate this recognition tonight, we've worked very hard to establish everything this year.
Um, with that, too, I feel like sometimes you just need to hype yourself up, this is my, Mackenzie and Nicole, this is our first year in this position. So we've taken a lot of, a lot of effort, um, use positivity for mindset, be reflective and willing to grow, and um, it's been really exciting to see how excited our students and staff are to have all these fun events back in our school. Uh, and we couldn't do it alone, so I'm just gonna name off, um, the other members of the Brown Deer Way. We have Chloe Jimenez, Marisa, or Marissa Marks, Amanda Gowitz, Riley Anderson, Caitlin Gilbertson, Joe Plots, Ally Lester, Michelle Grossnick, Dave Miller, Dave Lucre, Tori Nelson, Ally Larson, Jessica Waznicki, Haley Wirzba. So we couldn't do this work without all of them as well.
Well, thank you, ladies, we appreciate you. All right, now we have all of our high school teachers, uh, we want to say congratulations, um, I guess we would have had to have the board meeting over in the field house for all the high school teachers to come. Uh, but we are extremely proud of Principal Brown and her leadership um, as it relates to our dedicated high school staff and the leadership team for their outstanding efforts in raising student ACT scores this school year. To all of our high school teachers, your hard work, commitment, and passion for education have made a significant impact on the academic achievements of our students. It is through your guidance, support, and innovative teaching methods that students have been able to succeed on their ACT exams. Your commitment to excellence and your unwavering, unwavering belief in your students, in our students' potential is truly commendable. Your efforts serve as an inspiration to the entire school community, and we are incredibly proud of your accomplishments. Thank you, high school teachers, for going above and beyond to ensure the success of our students, keep up the great work. So that is all of our high school teachers. Well. Next, um, Ms. Spoker, is she on?
She's on.
Is she, is she on?
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Spoker. Tonight, we'd like to recognize an exceptional middle school STEM teacher. Uh, Ms. Spoker, uh, we're happy that she came to be with us. Ms. Spoker, thank you for your remarkable work in planning amazing STEM field trips and leading our middle school after-school program. Ms. Spoker's dedication to providing enriching learning experiences through hands-on field trips has sparked curiosity and inspired countless students to pursue careers in STEM. Ms. Spoker, your innovative approach to education, as we all know, has been recognized on Channel Twelve. Additionally, your leadership in our after-school program has created a supportive envi- environment for students to explore their interests and develop valuable skills. We express our sincere gratitude for your outstanding contributions to our school community, and we are incredibly fortunate to have such an exceptional educator on our team. Thank you, Ms. Spoker. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much, it's been a really exciting first year here at Brown Deer. Um, it's easy to do cool stuff when you have great coworkers and the supportive administration, so that's been much appreciated. And I look forward to growing things even more next year.
Thank you. All right, uh, we are bringing Mr. House up again, Mr. House? Thank you for your exceptional middle school, for being an exceptional middle school art teacher. Your dedication to fostering our students' artistic talents and coordinating student artwork submissions is greatly appreciated. We are thrilled to announce that one of our students' artworks, artworks under Mr. House's guidance has won first place for the state of Wisconsin.
Ooh, all right.
This incredible achievement will be celebrated as our students' artwork will be showcased in the Oshkosh Public Library throughout the entire summer. Mr. House, your unwavering support for our students extends beyond the art classroom. You always play a significant role in our middle school, in our middle school after-school program. We are grateful for your immense contributions and for your ability to inspire creativity and artistic excellence in our students. Thank you very much. Mr. House. All right, and we have Mr. Davis, is Mr. Davis on?
No.
Okay. Okay, we would like to express our heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Davis for his support, his collaboration, and his leadership with our seventh grade teacher team. He has consistently gone above and beyond to assist and uplift his fellow educators, making a significant impact on the overall success of the middle school team and the educational experience of our students. Mr. Davis's dedication, expertise, and his unwavering commitment to supporting his colleagues has been instrumental in fostering a collaborative and thriving environment. We are truly fortunate to have such an outstanding team member, and we extend our deepest appreciation to Mr. Davis, who actually came up from the elementary school to the middle school, um, for his invaluable contributions to our school community. So when you see Mr. Davis, please extend a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Davis. Next, we have Mr. Tucker. Yeah, Mr. Tucker? I would like to recognize and commend Mr. Tucker, who by the way, was the DJ last Friday at prom, for his relentless dedication in supporting the social, social and emotional needs of students at Brown Deer Middle School. Victor Tucker, your unwavering love for our, profound and powerful impact on the school culture at Brown Deer Middle School. Through your compassionate approach and tireless efforts, you create a nurturing and inclusive environment where students feel supported, valued, and empowered. Your commitment to fostering the well-being and emotional growth of our students is truly commend- commendable. We are grateful for your invaluable contributions to your school community. And in spite of what, and we see Mr. Tucker in the building, he kind of always even keep like, nothing, not a whole lot rattles his cage, so we appreciate you, Mr. Tucker, and thank you for serving as one of the three members of our SEO team. You are great. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Cottin. With all the perfect smile on her face. Ms. Cottin, we would like to extend our sincere recognition to you for your exceptional uh, experience and expertise as a middle school educational assistant. We are also very proud of you for moving on to pursue your teaching license. Ms. Cottin, your unwavering commitment to our students and to your own professional growth speaks to the determination that you had to become a fully certified teacher. This exemplifies your passion for supporting and educating our students with special needs. Your relentless efforts to enhance your skills and knowledge in the field of education demonstrates your genuine dedication to providing the best possible support to our students. Ms. Cottin's on, ongoing journey toward obtaining your teaching certificate serves as an inspiration to both your colleagues, as well as your own children, and our students. We are incredibly proud of your accomplishments thus far, and what you will bring to us yet remains to be seen. Ms. Cottin is this close, this close to uh, earning her, her teaching certificate, and so we're gonna continue to stay behind her. Um, and we expect that she will be a special education teacher at the middle school next year. So Ms. Cottin, we. This is truly a demonstration of grow your own, and so we are proud of you. Thank you so much, you have a few words?
Um, thank you for this honor, um, and for all of the individuals who encouraged me, because I was not going to do this for those tickets, but Dr. Brown pointed me the first day. That had word and said she should really think about it, and along with the administration team at my school and as well as other teachers. Um, so I'm thankful that they believed in me to do this, I'm thankful that I was able to earn my elementary school certification, and like she said, I'm this close to my special education, so hoping that happens, so.
Back in our district showcase.
All right, well, man, a lot of wonderful things happening, a lot of uh, individuals doing a lot of great things and stuff, and you know, as, as speaking for the board, uh, we're always so enthused and so happy whenever we're able to be able to see all of the great work that our teachers and our students and our community are doing for us to be able to have those updates. So again, thank you so much for everything that you do, and we really appreciate being able to uh, be able to know about everything. So yes, thank you so much. So now, let's go on to our next item, item number three is our, our public comments. Now, with our public comments, they are just up for three minutes, and it is again, it's, it's for a comment that you may have, not a question. But if you do have something, uh, we will be able to potentially maybe be able to come back and get information for you. So for our public comments, if anyone has a comment that they would like to be able to make, remember, three minutes.
Speaking on an agenda item.
Oh, speaking on the agenda item, I'm so sorry, I apologize, and speaking on an agenda item that we do have right now. Anybody online?
Everybody in chat?
As usual, we'll give it another thirty seconds, just in case. All right, let's go on to item number four then, let's go on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, approval of our minutes, schedule vouchers, and approval of the school uh, safety drill. Someone like to make a motion, please?
Dr. Vito, Dr. Vito, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda, um, including the minutes of the April eleventh, twenty twenty three, uh, the special board meeting for September of April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Special board meeting and organizational meeting, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, the regular board meeting, the schedule of voucher payments via check ACH in wire transfer in the amounts of one million, two thousand, one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen um, dollars and sixty-three cents in the general checking account and the food service account, including funds ten, twenty-one, twenty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-seven, forty-nine, fifty, seventy-two, and eighty in the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, safe, school safety drill update as uh, presented. But Dr. Vito, I also like to note that there are um, some amendments that will need to be made.
Through the minutes?
Yeah, to the.
Yes.
So what, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Ms. Ashley, we have a motion on the floor of second. Let's make it, our motion has been made, seconded, uh, any discussion, conversation? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor would raise hand and or eye with the.
Wait, so the discussion is the amendments?
Yes, so the discussion would be the amendment, um, that should reflect, um, and I don't have the minutes in front of me, but I do know that.
April twenty fifth?
It was the special meeting of April twenty.
Twenty-fourth?
Whatever that Monday means, the twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth, yeah. Um, so what? So for the first um, amendment, it should be the election of the board president, it was moved by Alita, and second, uh, moved by.
Motion was made by you.
Right, it was made by me. And I believe the second was Peterson.
Then I would like to also add that there were two.
Then I would like to also add that there were two of the nominations as well. Nomination, um, that came from for, for Lisa for president, and then there was, oh, was it Lisa?
It was Lisa made the mo, Lisa made the motion to for, for Thea.
Yes. For Thea as president, and then there was a motion on the floor made.
Dorothy made the motion.
For vice president.
I think we passed it then. Lisa, Thea. It's a D second. Did not need a second. But I just wanted to, the minister of life. That is it for my.
Um, no, the, the twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth meeting, uh, item one, C, approval of the agenda, it was that it was, it was made by me, but it wasn't at that B for Ms. Robinson, because I was next.
For.
The twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth.
Oh, that Tuesday?
Yes. And everything else, I think, is.
I think everything's.
Yes. Those are only two things that we, that we saw. Didn't even want any other board member to see anything else. Okay, there are any, uh, I was, uh, where did she was checking to see her notes, if there are anything else.
That was.
That was.
That was all I had for that.
Okay, all right, so if there isn't, if there's anything else, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other further conversation and or discussion? Here you see any, uh, all in favor, raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? You're gonna see now, motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. With corrections. All right, so now let's go on to our item number five, our education foundation update.
Dr. Beal, if I may, uh, we start with the, I'm sorry, maybe start with the junior women's club donation. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, I thought you said, I thought we were doing J and K.
I'm sorry, NJ. They're kind of teaming up together tomorrow.
Okay, so it's. Okay, so I and K are together.
I and J.
Okay, so I and J and not I and K. I don't think we have to go back, since we made the, uh, we changed the agenda, I think.
We didn't specifically say what the changes were. We just said what the amendments to the.
Okay, all right, so let's go on to item. All right, item I, approval of the Brown Deer Junior Women's Club donation.
Yes, and we have Ms. Caroline with us for, she's here with us again. So Ms. Caroline, if anybody can come on up?
My name is Carolyn Mitchell, and I'm the current treasurer for the Brown Deer Junior Women's Club. Excuse me, I get a little anxious when I speak in public, so just ignore this, uh, sex role. Um, for those of you who don't know what the Brown Deer Junior Women's Club, we're a group of women that work together for the betterment of our community, and we hold fundraisers throughout the year, and then at this time of the year, we distribute those funds. Um, the school district has been great in letting us use the elementary school gymnasium for our rummage sales, and they were more, more, um, more productive this year than in the past. Um, actually, most of our fundraisers made more money this year than they have in the past. So, so you know how our process goes on distributing this money? I send out requests in April, um, and Ellen Schimmans has been great in getting my request through the school district. She will send out a blast to all the teachers and everybody, asking if they need anything. This year, we had twenty teachers respond with requests for things that they needed, and, um, sometimes we have to pick and choose on what we can afford to give, but because we've had more favorable rummage sales and the requests were actually, um, not as sizable as in the past, so we were able to grant all twenty teachers requests. Many of them got more than they wanted. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the items that were asked for. Um, Dolores Brown, the middle high school librarian, asked for a hundred dollars to professionally print twenty-five copies of the school's literary journal for the students that are featured, so she's going to get it.
All right.
Um, and, um, see who asked for it here, um. The BDE Makerspace Library from April Jones, she asked for a Wonder Workshop dash robot for a hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. It's a coding robot with five free programming STEM apps, and they have three, but they would like two more, so she's getting them. Awesome. The seventh grade ELA, Tomlin, is the teacher requested it as for a gaming racket for reading, for a total of ninety dollars, they're getting it. And a lot of the other class force were for some tissues and cleaning wipes and, and headphones, and those who asked for less than sixty dollars for items, they're getting sixty dollars. So we are giving the school district teachers and wish list a total of one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. And I just want to make a comment that, um, that contest, that our contest, that Mr. House's student won, and Brown Deer Junior sponsored that contest. We do it every year. It's for seventh and eighth grade art students, and we saw the, the competition at state. I went to the state convention where the competition was. It was a room this size with like six tables full of artwork, and our student took first place in two dimensions.
All right.
In addition to the school district, we've also given, um, four thousand five hundred dollars to the village, um, fifteen hundred to the library, a thousand to the police department, a thousand on our surefire, and a thousand to park and rec. So, like I said, our fundraisers were more successful this year than in the past, and if I could have one of the ladies from the education foundation come up, please? We normally give the education foundation funds for high school scholarships to graduating seniors, and in the last couple of years, it's only been about nine hundred dollars. This year, I can give fifteen hundred dollars.
It will happen next year.
It's not too late.
Awesome, that, so now you can give more scholarships.
It will be. So be, and let me just say, as someone who's lived in this, been in this community for a very long time, Carolyn and that group of women do outstanding work, and to hear you list all the things that you're sponsoring, we're not talking about an organization of a hundred women, twenty-eight, right, we're talking about twenty-eight women who make all this happen, so thank you.
And any of you women who want to join, just check out our website. Um, it's open to any women in Brown Deer and the surrounding communities, and the time commitment is very small. So if anybody's ever interested in checking us out, um, check out the website, um, come to one of our meetings. Our meetings are held in the basement of the Brown Deer Library, and we've been an organization since nineteen sixty-eight, so we celebrate fifty-five years this year. So as long as you guys continue to allow us to use your, your school district grounds and, um, things like that for our fundraisers, we'll keep raising money and giving it back.
All right. Excellent, this is a pretty good. All right. Thank you very, thank you very much. Uh, what we would like to be able to do is if someone would like to be able to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Brown Deer Junior Women's Club donation as presentist.
Thank you very much. Ms. Walker, motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Megan. Motion has been made and seconded. Any conversation and or discussion? All that I want to say is wonderful work. Excellent, excellent work, excellent work. All right, let's go to vote. All in favor, raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? Here in seeing that motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you, Carolyn. All right, and the rest of the, uh, junior women's club. All right, let's go on to item J, education foundation update.
All right, we're happy, we'll just, or and if you have. Hey, Rhonda, looking at this right here, um, we're very pleased to announce that we have secured, um, wonderful people to continue the foundation's work and serve with our officers for the. Kathy and I, and Mark Boss, who's our treasurer, and Fred Yachek, who is here, all must retire at the end of June, because we have, according to our bylaws, we can only serve for nine years. And longer than that, we've served for nine years, so it's time to pass the baton on to others. I can honestly tell you for the last more than a year and a half, we have worked tirelessly to try to find someone to take our positions. You know, to be asked to serve on a board is kind of like challenging itself, it's like, why would I want to do that? Well, to ask someone to come on and serve as president, treasurer, and vice president was kind of a daunting task, but in the eleventh hour, we had two, um, graduates of the class of nineteen eight from Brown Deer High School, two businessmen who come forward and said that they will serve next, so. Yeah, so they'll clearly be back. Um, Michael Weiss will be the president. Mark Beveld will serve as vice president. Percy, Percy. First right behind there will be the secretary, and Kurt Wood, here, just president, has been shadowing us the last six months. We're very excited to have him continuing this important work. The bulk of our work goes to raise funds for grants for staff members and scholarships for graduate students, and that's a very big thing. One interesting little note on that is that our treasurer and I met the man who's going to become the president years ago, when he was president of the scholarship fund that operated under the high school at that point in time. We worked with him, and now he's going to come full circle, and he's going to be kind of taking over for us, so. Um, in two thousand fourteen, we literally, several of us who were parents and former school board members and everyone sat here in this room, passed the hat, and then gave something to ask, because our children have such a good reputation, and we passed the hat, that's how the education foundation is formed. So, um, we've now exceeded over half a million dollars that we've been able to purchase at times. We are very grateful to our many donors who give us anywhere from ten dollars to ten thousand dollars to be given there. But we're very grateful to them. I'm grateful to all of the board members who have served with us over the years. Um, Kathy has been a wonderful vice president. We've, we've worked closely together to keep things rolling. Dr. Kelsey Brown and her predecessor were very, very instrumental in helping us to be successful, so. Thank you to all of you for the important work that you're doing, and the education foundation of Brown Deer will continue with its mission of advancing education opportunities for the students, families, and staff of the Brown Deer.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. That's all we, that's, there's not much else to say outside of that right there, and raising all of those dollars and stuff for those students, uh, through the years, through Brown Deer. I remember, uh, back some years back, students would be going door to door, and they'd be selling the tickets and all kinds of stuff or whatever, and then I remember one time I was like, when I was looking at the info, and I was like, wait a minute, where, where the kids at? Because I always, we were always so happy to support them to come, to be able to do that, we're like, where? And then there was a change to it and everything and stuff, but it kept going, and, um, man, wonderful, wonderful work, and you've touched lives and helped so many young people be able to continue their pursuit of higher education and stuff, so, so thank you guys so much for all of that leadership that you have over these past years.
We appreciate that. So we have our board officers, and that's great, um, but we still are looking for parents and alums and other people in the community to enlarge the board. So if you know of anybody that might be interested, please have them let us know. Let, um, Dr. Kelsey Brown know, and someone will follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Dr. Kelsey Brown, is there a way for us to be able to put something on the Brown Deer website?
We have.
We have it there, and let them know that we're looking for board members again?
Okay, we have, and it's been on the tracker, and Barb and I are going to be meeting with, uh, the village manager in early June. Um, I talked to Wanda Montgomery this weekend, and, uh, she suggested we meet him because he may be able to support it more moving into the future, so.
And I had, I don't know if anybody has ever thought, and I've had, had this conversation with Courtney, but if you attend the Booster Club golf outing, uh-huh, that is three quarters a love time, so. Well, that is, if the Ed Foundation wanted a table there to capture alumni, but I think they all feel pretty good after that event. They donate, so I think that was, that's a, it's a huge crowd, and just that's typically Brown Deer, Brown Deer parents, Brown Deer families, Brown Deer alums that travel from outside of the state to come back just for that event.
All right, exactly, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to our next item is our facilities and grounds update.
Mr. Ross. Hi, how's it going, guys?
All right.
Um, just to kind of give you a roundabout, um, I did send out, um, kind of my update, the generalization of everything that, uh, I wanted to kind of go over with you in a brief description. Um, I'll just start with, uh, the top one, and I know it kind of goes with the plan E. Um, I don't know if you want me to start that, if you want me to continue, okay, no problems. Um, I'm looking for the board to approve, uh, new pricing for our facilities, renting our facilities here in District Five. Uh, I did, uh, we have been telling you for a little bit of time now that we are going to one facility scheduler, and that is called R-School, and what we're looking to do is get your approvals to update since we haven't had an approval since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, so we're in there. Um, what we're looking to do is to be more competitive with, um, our surrounding areas. Um, I sent out a spreadsheet that has, uh, three other districts, um, with pricing, and, um, with me and a couple of other people, um, being, uh, Harold and Kevin and myself, we've come up with something that we think is competitive with other districts around us, um, for our facilities in our beautiful area. Um, so today I'd be looking for approval to, um, have that taken care of, so that we can add this to our, our school, um, facilities rental, so that people can start renting our facilities and us not so much, you know, make huge profit, but at least cover the charges of cleaning and things like that as we go along.
All right, so, so are we looking, are you looking at proposal G three for the new dollar amount?
Um, G two would be for, uh, our local community and, um, select members, and then G three would be for our outside community. All right. So then is the white, are the columns in white what we're currently charging? Correct. So, do we have any folks that we consistently rent to now? Correct, we do. We have people that reoccur every year, um, and right now they, they're kind of under what we just guess on what the costs are going to be, and I want to make it so that our, we have coverage for everything. So could we potentially price them out with the numbers? Well, and it, that's, that's all kind of this aspect. It is up to our discretion if we want to change pricing at any one point in time for special events or things like that. Um, that I guess we could use an option B or an option C for people with other things, but from what I've gathered from other districts, they really don't change um, from what you see in front.
Uh, my next question is, um, insurance. Now with this, is this also included in insurance, or they have to have their own insurance?
They currently have to have their own insurance policy. Um, I know that we've, uh, been asked if we could do it under an umbrella under our insurance, um, for local community members and things like that. Um, we are still looking into that. I will bring that up in further discussion with our, uh, business director, Kevin. I will bring that up in further discussion with our, uh, business director, Kevin, and see what we can do about that, um, because he has contacts for our insurance company. And we can find out if we can offer that kind of thing to, um, some community.
Board members, any other questions in relationship to the, in relationship to the proposal for the new, uh, rate increase? Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make motion to approve the facilities rental charges as presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Motion hasn't been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Megan, all right, motion has been made. Second, any further conversation and or discussion? Only thing is, is if you can later on, be able to let us know in relationship to that, uh, yes, information regarding the insurance writer. Okay? All right. With that being said, all in favor, raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? And you see none, motion carries unanimously. All right, Russ, we're good.
Wonderful.
All right.
To continue on, um, we had a, um, company, Brad mentioned the last month that we were going to have a, uh, company, um, by, uh, the name of PSI, which stands for Performance Service Inc., uh, walk through our facility. What they're going to do is they're going to come up with the documentation for giving us a kind of a heads up on things that need to be addressed now, your future, our future, and what are emergency bases. Um, they're an outside contractor, um, they're walking around all of our district, um, elementary, middle school, uh, here at ASC. Um, they walked our grounds and what they do is they, um, evaluate all of our equipment. They evaluate all of our walls. They tell us, hey, this could be addressed, this could be addressed today, this has to be addressed now. This could be addressed in five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now. Um, so it's kind of a, a way to have us give, uh, capital investments a, a shot. So, um, and it's not just me coming up to you and saying, hey, you know, I think in five years we need to do this. This is outside company with, you know, architects, uh, professional contractors, things like that, taking, looking and evaluating this. Um, they plan to have, they did a walkthrough last week. Um, they plan on coming back on, uh, June seventh and eighth, I do believe, to do some more walkthroughs, through some more of the classrooms. They didn't get a chance to walk through this first time. And then they plan to have a proposal to us, uh, which is very, very detailed and everything that we need, um, close to, uh, the beginning of school year. So we're thinking, uh, in our meeting in August, I will have something for to look at, review, and have a discussion.
All right, and this is an informational item, correct?
Correct.
Oh, I guess in relationship to this and stuff, because this is relationship to the front of the ASC and the security part, correct?
Yeah.
And so you're thinking about, well, just a hundred and what?
Uh, that, that also brings me to the next one, which is the ASC. Um, CG spent came here and they gave, and they gave us an estimate, as you can tell, for a hundred and four thousand dollars, I believe it was. Uh, yeah, one oh four. Um, and what that is, is that's giving us an entranceway that would, um, help us be a little more, I would say, a little bit more protected as far as, um, our staff here at the ASC. Um, it would allow an entranceway to have, uh, people come in, but not really be in the general vicinity of us. It's more of an enclosed area where there are two doors, one on either side. Um, there is a small drawing, the guy could not give me a, uh, a detailed drawing. Um, he, because since, uh, he was out on the field, so he gave me what he, uh, thought the design should look like. Um, again, this isn't, you know, a hundred percent provisional. He just wanted to give you guys a guesstimate of what it was going to look like. Um, I, I really, um, am hoping that you guys will have further discussion on this. Um, and help us out with that because this is a safety concern of ours here at the district office level. Um, and we want to make our staff safe, feel safe as well.
All right. Um, I guess my other probably question is just if we're doing something on ASC, does this have any, anything else that we have to do from the outside downstairs? Right, we've got all of the other football stuff. Well, I mean, since we're talking about this ASC building, and I know that there's always big conversation about this ASC building kind of being.
Yep. And I don't know if you guys have noticed, but we did paint the outside of our ASC. So currently we do have a brand new facelift on the ASC, um, to make it brighter and more attractive for you and I instead of the, the thing that we used to have.
So Matt? I do want to let you know that I did notice that on Monday when I.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So thank you very much.
So I do appreciate that, um, you know, I don't know if you have the pictures. Um, but she can bring them up, um, if it cooperates.
Yeah.
So this is what it used to look like.
Yeah, that was before.
If anyone remembers.
I always wondered, why did we have green?
Um, well, this used to be the old police station.
Right, I know, and that's the whole thing with downstairs.
And, and here's what I'm going to tell you is I don't think that's as many updates shy of, you know, what you see today, um, to the outside of this building.
But, but, and that was the reason why I was asking in relationship to the ASC, because down on the bottom, anybody that knows or maybe had a kid play football, whatever, you've got all, you've got the football locker rooms, you've got all of that stuff that's down there. So I was also kind of wondering, okay, we're looking at the cosmetic piece here or whatever. Is there any other structural thing that we need to fix?
Is going to give us, uh, a more of a proposal for, um, more construction to be done to the facilities, but they couldn't get us an accurate number or a number fast enough for this, uh, for this board meeting. But my, um, oh, and this is what it looks like now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my hope is, is that, um, I can have something for the next board meeting, um, to give you guys for an all-around couple of different options that we can do here at the district level as far as remodeling the entire inside, downstairs, upstairs, and everything else, and what that would look like.
Right, does everybody know what down, like the bottom part down here, everybody knows what's down there?
Yeah, we go down there for tornadoes.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we need a window down there for their football locker room, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They need a little something.
Maybe, maybe an air freshener.
Just one square. Yeah.
Okay, so, so, yeah, so what we're looking for is the, the discussion of, you know, the immediate entrance of the ASC, um, at the bare minimum of letting the board know what our thoughts, uh, our objection or objective is moving forward of protecting, um, everyone here at ASC. Um, so it's just food for thought to give you guys kind of, uh, something to discuss. Um, hopefully me being able to bring up more information at the next board meeting and having you guys deal with this, um, so you can maybe, um, take a motion at some point to help us out.
All right, so you said you're going to, so just for clarification, board. So, so next meeting, you think you'll be able to have this? I don't know, is that a little aggressive for you to be able to think you could have this information for us for the next meeting?
Uh, that's what I can try for.
Okay.
I can, I, I, I aim high for everything. So I can, uh, I'm aggressive and I want to make sure that, you know, we have something for you guys that's, you know, informative and, um, something that could work for us potentially one way or another.
Okay, cool. All right, so I was going to say that, Ms. Robson, make sure you, I mean, Ms. Ross, make sure that, put it as part of the adjacent. Yes, speech.
Um, Matt, so the, you have it at four thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's something that Kevin is going to be able to find in the budget or those.
I have nothing to talk to Kevin about this. And this is just an informative basis right now.
Got it.
Um, this is just to let the board know that, you know, I am looking at something and it's, it's a basis of what we're going to base, you know, the front entrance of our place.
Right. All right, so Kevin hasn't.
He, he's.
Okay. All right, okay.
That's a good question.
Yes.
What direction is anything that could give me a point of reference for how to read this? You don't say.
If you're looking at that right now, um, very bottom, just like this, is the exterior front entrance of the door.
Okay, so this would be the front exit.
Yeah. All right, are any other questions?
My last thing is that, uh, to give you guys an idea is that we, um, went after a grant for security and safety. It is, um, called the COPS Grant, um, the School Prevention Program Grant. Um, it is dedicated to, um, giving schools and districts, um, funds to help, uh, up the game for security and, um, protection. Um, we went after it, uh, with the wonderful help of, uh, Susan, um, and lots of hours of talking to her and gathering information and learning a lot about Susan. Um, we went after a grant totaling about three hundred thousand dollars over the next three years, which would help our camera systems, front entrances, glass protection, um, trainings for, um, anything that we needed. Um, and what we would have to cover over the next three years would be twenty-five percent of that, which would turn out to be roughly about twenty-five thousand dollars per year, um, because it's, uh, seventy-five, twenty-five split. Um, we submitted the grant on May thirtieth, and I honestly don't know when the deadline for, you know, when it's going to say yes or no to us. But, you know, as soon as I know something, I will definitely look for it. September?
Yeah.
You think it'll be about September?
I think so, yeah. It's at most, unfortunately.
So they, yes, they have to have it before October.
Yeah.
And then after that, um, a general update on our grounds, uh, we're preparing for graduation. Um, that's coming up next week. Um, I am, uh, very excited. Um, our grounds are looking great. Uh, we've been doing a lot of trimming of the, of the trees, getting all that prep ready. Um, getting the grass cut. Um, I've actually been in contact with David Day Franks to make sure that their, uh, the grass will look great for, uh, Saturday and that, uh, you know, have five inches of weeds. So we're, we're rearranging that. Um, Kathy is scheduled to be here on Wednesday. Um, and then we're going to have, uh, our custodians here. Um, I know that Dr. Brown has been working very, very hard at this to, uh, make sure that it probably pretty much goes without a hitch. So, you know, um, and then, um, as you know, uh, the summer, the summer and spring sports are coming up. So we're starting to get all of our equipment together and all this other stuff. Um, things that have been, you know, not really, um, I won't say, um, what would be the words I'm looking for? Things that have been kind of put to the back burner, we're starting to bring forth to the front burners and starting to, um, get things done more closely, uh, closer attention to detail so that when people drive by, they see our district and they don't think that it's, you know, going, going in chams. So we're, we're paying closer attention to detail now. Um, we're fixing smaller objects that have been put to the back burner for the last few years and, um, moving forward. So that's pretty much the update on my end. So do you guys have any questions for?
I do have a question. I know during graduation, sometimes folks will navigate their way to the soccer field part.
That's not going to be a possibility this year.
Okay.
Um, we are blocking off the back road.
Yeah.
To having no one back there, um, at all.
Okay.
Hopefully the, the barricades that I put up there will be a very deterrent for people not to be driving in the backyard.
What a backyard for that night.
Yeah, that. Any yard. All right, any other board members' questions? Appreciate the update. Thank you very much. All right. All right, let's go on to our next item, approval of new hires. Since Kevin is not here, I would think that would be Dr. Kelsey Brown.
Good evening again, board members. Um, tonight, uh, we are asking the board to, uh, make a, or to approve a motion for, uh, the hiring of Matthew Strand. Uh, Matthew will serve as a middle school social studies teacher for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then subsequent to Matthew, uh, we are asking for more approval for the hiring of Chandler Sumner Garrett as a middle school band and music teacher for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
All right, we have a motion for hiring of Matthew and Chandler. Would someone like to make a motion? We can do them both with one motion since it's for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Um, good, after we, I'd like to make a motion, but please, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Matthew Strand as a middle school social studies teacher for the twenty-two, for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'd also like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Chandler.
It wouldn't be two separate motions.
This is one.
You would just read it together.
We'll just read it together, it's just one motion.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just approve the hiring of Chandler.
And to approve the hiring of Chandler Sumner Garrett as a middle school band music teacher for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four.
All right, thank you very much. Motion has been made. Do we have a second? All right, Ms. Megan, motion has been made. Second, any discussion and or conversation? Here you can see none, all in favor, raise hand and or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it's seen none, uh, motion carries unanimously. So we welcome Matthew and Chandler for the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four school years. All right. All right, Dr. Kelsey Brown, let's go on to our next item is approval of resignations.
We cannot have any resignations this evening.
All right, that is a great thing, no resignations. All right, so let's move, let's move forward. Now, are you going to be able to give us this update or should we put this all for Kevin?
So the idea, so Kevin did, I, uh, the, uh, you know, this is the year-to-date update on the board, in board docs, and, uh, what we like, the way we like to proceed.
Oh, unanimous. I'm sorry.
Stacy's not on it.
She left?
Yeah.
So it's six zero, I'm sorry. I said unanimously, I apologize. I thought Stacy was, I thought I heard. Okay.
But, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, so the way we would like to proceed is if you have any questions for, given that he is not here, probably landing with our hairline, so you know, we should be getting that for Florida. Uh, but if you have any questions for Kevin, uh, if you would e- email him with any questions that you may have, he will respond accordingly to your email, uh, based on what he has provided on our book.
Uh, board members' questions in relationship to anything that you see here on the financials. I didn't really, I, I didn't have anything that I really had a question about. I would have asked him this if he was here, but there isn't anything that I've, that I see that I have a question about, uh, right now. Uh, any other board members have any questions or anything? And as Dr. Kelsey Brown stated earlier, that if you do have any questions, you can email those, uh, to Kevin for clarification.
That's it, too, but I can certainly email him. Do you want to just state some publicly or just work with Kevin?
So we all.
Yeah, if you do it, if you do it, yeah.
Um, I, I just was real curious about Funtan's expense, uh, for the maintenance dues. Please, why it was extremely higher than what we've budgeted?
Which, which number, which object number?
Funtan, object number nine forty-nine.
I see.
We only budgeted twenty-five hundred and so far we've expensed out almost forty-two thousand dollars. So I was curious to know why that was so high in comparison to what we had budgeted for. And so item nine forty-nine.
Yeah, nine forty-nine is maintenance dues slash fees.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was paid to this one.
Yeah, so it was for twenty-five hundred and right now we're at forty-one thousand, four sixty-nine.
And then the only other one, and he probably would have to be the one to answer this. This is back on the first page of expenses, line three eleven. The E-rate consultant. I see where we paid him out, him or her out, three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. And I just was wondering if we've received revenue in yet associated with the E-rate?
Yes. So, um, I can answer that. So, yep, so the, um, so the E-rate consultant, it depends on, so that. So, yep, so the, um, so the E-rate consultant, it depends on, so that one was a little larger this year in part because the, that was payment for the ECF funds, so the, um, the, the computer funds, so that we got from the federal grant. So we chose to use our E-rate provider to facilitate that purchase of the technology, and they had a, um, it was a small charge, but because that was last year, then, so then those funds come due the way that they bill are this year, so. So the, the grant, you know, so the grant covered the cost of the Chromebooks, um, last year, okay? And then this year then is when the bill was due, right?
Right, so the fee that we received is associated with.
With the cost of the last, yes, yes. Right, and so, yep, and then, um, and what I do is, so you know, is that um, the expenses for whether it's computers or, um, it's the, typically, it's just our internet products, which are category one, um, and, um, and then category two are those, kind of those capital expenditures, so those are billed at different percentage rates, but, um, I budget in my budget for those. Those aren't, you can't discount those for E-rate, so I make adjustments within my budget depending on what we're spending to cover the, the cost of those fees. So we don't receive money in for those E-rate services, I choose to manage those services out of my budget, so.
We don't make mistakes. We don't receive any funds and that would hit and net our cable bills or anything like that.
We do, we do, yep, so we receive a discounted cable bill, absolutely, and then we receive, um, it's an eighty percent discount on cable expenditures. It's just the fees that the ECTS, you know, um, um, ECS, um, uh, charges that, that I then incur costs within my budget and then I allocate those.
So basically every year then, the fees are actually going to come into our next physical year then.
They do, they do, and that's where, um, and it's, it's kind of been a little funky, so because of COVID years and things like that, so. Typically, what I do is I estimate what the fees are going to be for the next year, and then I include those, and then in the previous year, so, you know, so that we're all, we're just kind of playing this little.
So.
Knowing that expense.
Right, so you know what we could turn around and do then is actually have Kevin add that into the next FY budget or whatever and stuff, so it's already sitting there, so it doesn't turn around and look like, it look as a negative or stuff, because it is technically a cost.
It is, it's cost incurred and normally we bill it within the next year, and it's, it's one of those things, it's a one-off, and then Kathy and I have to have a conversation like, no, no, no.
Right, okay.
I think that's why that number was large.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
Excellent, our questions, any other board members, did anybody else find anything that they had, uh, questions in relationships? Alright. Thank you very much, alright, let's move on, move forward to, uh, see, we, this is, hey, we already did a, uh, this, a discussion of approval of Juneteenth holiday.
Yes, um, good evening again, uh, board members, as you all well know, uh, the instructional calendar was finally approved back in February, or was, was approved February early. Um, and what is appropriate for, um, the school district, Brown dear, is for the board to also approve what we will recognize as an official holiday. So we put the calendar kind of in the cart for the horse, but we probably should have did it simultaneously if it wasn't a matter.
Right.
Um, and so tonight, uh, we just want to make it official so that our staff, um, who are teaching some, summer school, uh, know and understand that Juneteenth is, um, we are recognizing as a as an official holiday as it appears on our instructional calendar. So it is in alignment, in alignment with the calendar that you approved.
Right, but question, when does our actual school year, is there ever gonna be a time when our actual school year ends? After that date or whatever, I know, I'm just, I'm just asking from the, from the standpoint of, we'll be paying for, we'll be paying for the holiday, so that's just, I just wanted to see like, you know.
In the previous fiscal, in a, in a near-ending fiscal year, yeah, I don't, unless we are, I don't actually, don't ever see that happen.
Well, we do not, fingers crossed.
That would be a lot.
See, because that would be, that would be a nice little, that'd be that, and that's the only reason I asked, well, of course, I'm, I'm with the, I was just wondering in relationship to if our school year actually fell and continued on to that date and then being able to paint that out.
So that's what we became, the only way I could say is a snow day.
Well, I guess, I guess you are right, uh.
Or extra, 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 extra snow day.
Yeah, so again, okay, alright, so.
And with low.
We've been going anyway, so, yeah. Alright.
Uh, we just, our, uh, administration is, uh, reckon, recommending or asking for the board to approve Juneteenth as, uh, an official paid holiday for our teaching summer school in alignment with our twenty-three, twenty-four instructional calendar.
Okay, so basically then this would be for teachers who are teaching summer school and administrative staff, pretty much. Okay.
I've made this, um, holiday, right?
National holiday? Alright. Alright, so with that being said, would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the Juneteenth day as a paid holiday for professional staff as presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, if I have a second, was that a speech or is that a question?
I have a question, but I'll wait till.
Second, just Megan? Oh, Megan, look down, alright, any questions?
I do have a question associated with the motion because we're looking forward to be in the twenty-three, twenty-four. But we're in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year for this one coming up.
So can we amend the motion for twenty-two?
Yeah.
New year and make it applicable to the twenty-three, twenty-four handbook, because that's the one we'll, we'll revise for the following.
So is it on the calendar for twenty-two?
I don't think, was it, I don't think it was on the calendar. I don't think it was on there. I don't think it was on there.
I don't think it.
I don't think it was on there.
It is.
It is?
Oh, good.
Are you positive about it? Okay, alright, so, I'm, I'm just saying, I just wanted to make sure I'm positive, alright, so you know what, let's make, let's change, let's redo the, let's redo the motion.
The motion didn't stay a year.
Right, so. We need to add the year.
You actually could consider two motions, one for twenty-two, twenty-three, the constructional calendar that we're in, and then for twenty-three, twenty-four, you can make a motion to make sure it's included, because this handbook is kind of, you know, it's over, that handbook is over. But as we revise our new handbook, twenty-three, twenty-four, this is the language that we'll.
What, what have we, what have we just made?
We.
That doesn't matter, we still, we still.
But the motion is not to make it a holiday for the year, it's for.
So take the date off of it.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, the motion is fine, there was no date. So it will be a school holiday until.
Period, whenever we come back and say.
Board said no, so.
Right, alright, so actually, so the motion is, the motion is fine, the second is fine, any other further questions?
So, one question I have, um, which is something that I think would be great if our organizations do, but I don't know that they do, in providing it as holiday off, is there any education piece that goes behind it to let folks know the significance of having the day off and the significance of holiday itself?
You know, the children who are currently.
Summer school or generally speaking. Uh, with, with the children or, and mainly with the staff really too, in terms of, it's not just like, hey, here's an extra day off, but this is why there's an extra day off, or this is why this is acknowledged as a holiday.
Alright, any other discussion before we go to vote? Alright, hearing and seeing none, all in favor, raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? Since I don't have to turn around and look back, alright, motion carries unanimously, six two zero, alright. Alright, let's go on to our next item is G, discussion and approval of functional skills room.
Good evening, I know you've had a team for a while, you're in conflict with executive orders. Uh, so the first one is for a, uh, creation of a functional skills room at Brownier Elementary Schools. Currently, we do not have one, but we do have, uh, some classrooms at the middle and high school level, so I'm hoping to create a vertical alignment across the district. Uh, this year, we did have fourteen students that currently were moved to the general curriculum classroom to receive a variety of services, which total almost all their entire day. Uh, with the creation of this classroom, uh, we would eliminate a lot of our needs for one-to-one aides at the elementary level and create that support system for our littles that are coming in with a lot of needs, supports that they need from our classroom teachers and general, and special education teachers.
Okay, so question, so is this for students that have physical limitations or is this, uh, students with behavioral?
No, not behavioral, these would be students that require extensive specialized design construction and also receive OTPT speech services, things like that, yes, so more functional base.
Alright, so these are the students, uh, with disabilities?
Yes.
Okay.
So, can you help me understand where those students, where they currently are? It's one-on-one, is it in the regular classroom?
In the regular classroom, uh, one-to-one, uh, support. So not with their specialty teacher, general teacher, but also one-to-one aide.
Okay. So then, yeah, I know it said we have like seventeen one-to-one aides.
Yeah, so when I started here, Kevin did indicate that our budget for aides district-wide is about a million dollars. Um, about, over half of that, about six hundred thousand is for the elementary, elementary school.
Okay, so then my question comes down to then what happens to those seventeen?
Uh, well, we have had a high turnover rate with educational assistance, it's a very hard job. Um, at times, they're just shadows, we don't really have put in place any type of supports for them to actually be instructional, I am putting that in place as well, um, so that they're receiving that specialized attention even when they're not with a teacher, so that they receive those supports as they roll in our district. Um, I hope not to have seventeen aides, uh, one-to-one aides, I'm hoping that our in- instructional aides will service our special education population as a whole. So with the creation of the role, um, I thought about when I worked in a room like that, it was myself as a teacher and one aide. Um, this classroom would have three to four aides, because we also want to mainstream our students and make sure that they're getting the maximum exposure in the general ed classroom with their non-disabled peers. We, we will still have aides, just not one-to-one aides. Some kids do require a one-to-one, we do have a student that, um, injured themselves, uh, she's in a walker on tiny, one of our tiny babies. Um, it's just that moving forward, it would be beneficial for us to have instructional aides in opposed to a shadow, uh, because as I've spoken with GPI, it's not least restricted to have a person shadowing you, and then there's also no instruction going on on there with you.
I was just wondering, um, as I was looking at this, i- in the end, it talked about, I wondered who we were going to have staff this room, and in the end, it talked about that there was a position that was not filled previous school year that can be moved into this role. I was wondering what was the position that wasn't filled, A, and B, I was hoping Kevin would be here, if then has this position been eliminated from the budget that he's doing for the upcoming?
So the position has not been eliminated, he held that, the position was the coordinator slash case manager at the high school level. Uh, position held by a Leo Bishop was never filled.
And we have no plans to fill that position.
Not at this time of the morning.
Alright, my question runs a little bit differently, we're talking about fourteen students, correct?
Right now, we have fourteen students, yes.
Okay, so this has to be a very big room.
Yes.
Alright, so are we? Alright, so I know in the elementary school, we did, when we did the, uh, renovations and everything else like that, we had these maker spaces and all the rest, it's different stuff, where exactly would this room be located at, would it be on the first floor?
Yeah, so there's two rooms that are being looked at currently, um, both have bathrooms, there's one that was used as a staff lounge, it's staff lounge, and then the, uh, Dr. Kerr community.
So what is the?
It has bathrooms also.
So what does the state say in relationship to square footage per student when we're talking about students with disabilities?
They're not filled past ten, these, these numbers include fifth graders that are moving on to sixth grade, also that number does drop, um, once we move our fifth graders up to six, uh, the number drops a bit.
Alright, but then, but we, but we don't know if we have any other new students that might be coming in with the disabilities.
Right.
So I, so my question then is, Ms. Ramos, is are, are we setting this up to be able to, uh, handle like fourteen, fifteen students, is the space big enough to be able to do it, we're using these two classrooms to be able to do it, so is the space going to be big enough in order to be able to do this?
Yes.
Okay, do we have to do any renovations to those classrooms to make them? Ever? And, right, then the last piece is, when we started to look at our numbers from the elementary school or whatever have you, I know that we only had, was it like, three or four classrooms, because we was a fourth grade or something, or third, one of the grades wasn't having sixth, but they were having five?
The K five side, so we broke up, so the locker rooms, there was a locker room, the K five one that we well, if you will, and renovated and added two additional classrooms on the K five side to make sure we could have five, right? K five classrooms.
Okay.
So that's where that extent, I believe that's the expansion that you're referring to for the younger students. But we're also seeing at the elementary school is a high influx of, um, three-year-olds who are coming in, uh, with special, with special needs as well, so between what we're saying from three-year-olds and, um, and um, offering the specially designed instruction for, uh, students with disabilities, uh, this would be a great way to, to better serve and meet the needs of students, and the beauty lies in the fact that we have, we have that set up at the middle and high school, and so our students understand and adapt, um, to that, to a similar environment at the elementary school when they move to middle and they move to high, it's, it's not new for them.
Right, I understand, I mean, concept, great, wonderful, I'm looking at it from a, from a space, spacing standpoint, so then when we have our regular classrooms, do we have enough regular classrooms, because I know like right now, like we have six of fifth grade and five of, whatever was it, five and then four or whatever have you, so how many after these two classes, how many more of the, additional classrooms do we have in elementary school?
That are available?
Yes.
Uh, the last piece would be, we, we wouldn't have any, I mean, the last thing we could do, and ladies, you all can help me with, the last thing that we would be able to do is uh, the professional learning community room, I'm not trying to take space down, there's still saying, uh, about.
Well, again, the reason, again, reason I'm asking is, is now, if we didn't end up with an influx of elementary school students, and then we ended up with five of each grade, we have five of each grade level, like right now we've got four in certain grade levels, we have five in each grade level, and or do we have any other space available in that building as currently constructed to be able to house?
Our, our pattern over the years has been five, four, five, four, so we, it flips, one, one grade level, one year it's five classrooms, and then next year is four, and that has been a pattern over time, so.
Let's have a good problem, you have five, 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 five. So.
Uh, we, we have the PLC room down there, um, we have the movement studio, which is where the Y, um, they have their wraparound programs, I don't know if that's big enough to be a classroom, so.
What about those other maker spaces that we had, we built in there, will we be able to do any things with those, will they do anything with those?
Maker space at the elementary school next to where Mr. Lecrae is doing his work. The STEM area, the one upstairs, uh, next to the art room.
Okay. Alright, I'm, like, again, I'm looking forward to me and life, our numbers have increased every year now, so if those elementary school numbers increase again, do we have our spacing in elementary school, and now do we end up back to that whole trailer thing or whatever have you, the stuff trying to, uh, I mean, but these, this is a legitimate thing, because if we do end up with an extra thirty or forty students in elementary school,
What do we do?
What do we do and where do we go? And so I think we better be prepared for potentially having a conversation with something like that or whatever have you, in case something like that does happen, but I love the concept relationship to this and stuff, because it is helping those students and then giving them some normalcy, and then they, when they do move, they, uh, they're, they're used to it, so.
I think this is also important to note, um, as we have conversations with other people serving directors and even me with other superintendents, when, when it is made known how many, um, care professionals we have in our district, they're amazed, um, to the point where GPI even said to us, you know, I just can't even imagine your budget with that many aides, so, uh, this is a way to, uh, be physically sound, if you will, and take a look at using those values in a different way to meet the needs of other children.
And for clarity, um, I know Dr. Biddy, you're talking about for those two rooms. But this is only going to be one of those two.
Yes, right, yeah.
I thought, I thought we were trying to use both of them, because I thought the space was actually only made for ten.
We only have, we only have eight coming up.
Right, but I'm just saying that we, but right now currently we have fourteen. So that reason I'm saying is, is.
Not one.
If we do end up with say fourteen again, or we end up whatever, we're gonna need both classrooms, we're not gonna be able to do it in one. Hence, the reason why my question is working.
Okay, so then uh that brings the question in, then would there need to be two staff higher? If we were to move in the two rooms?
If we have an increase in the amount of students in that room, yes.
So then the question becomes, can our budget accommodate the additional staff person? Do we have that? Yeah, we pull the funds from.
I think that that would be a question that would need to get posed to have, did you and Kevin?
With the reduction of the amount of aides that we have?
So we'd use, but so we'd use the aide money.
Okay, okay.
Alright.
Which is why I was surprised to see the mention of there was that other staff that we didn't use. Cause I'm like, well, we got six hundred that you're already using.
Yeah.
And if it's supposed to save money, then where we get the money from shouldn't be a question.
Very good point.
Yes. Alright, any other further questions? I mean, I know this is a really good conversation relationship to this, and we also try to look forward just in case. Good problems, always say, but being able to look uh being forward sided just in case, so.
Yeah, with all the new complexes.
Yeah, and so, and then uh then of course of our increased um enrollment every year. Everything and stuff, so uh yeah, and then if we actually end up with increasing K four. And I can't wait for it to turn into a full day program where our kids are here all day. I mean, I mean, we can, what I'm saying in relationship to, like right now, we got kids that come into K four, they're half day. Some come in in the morning and the other come in the afternoon, well, if we had it all day long, then you would have. You would need two classrooms or three classrooms or whatever, because they would all be there at the same time. Well, I think this is next, I think that's actually more of a facilities piece right now, whatever have you, looking at space.
Right, but we'll be. We have a conversation about the idea of this and talking to parents. Well, you're talking to your parents.
Uh we got, okay, we can't do talk about K four, I was just talking about the space part or whatever from that. But that would be something that we'd have to talk about, that'd be a different agenda item, because now we're talking about a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, I think that if there's interest and concern, it's definitely worth the.
Definitely.
As as an agenda.
Yes, most definitely, so with that being said, uh any other questions in relationship to the creation? Of the new uh of the new room, the functional skills room at the elementary school? Very none, uh would someone like to make a motion?
President, Dr. Vito, I'd like to make a motion to approve the creation of a functional skills room at the Brown Deer Elementary School. As presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bacon, a motion has been made, do we have a second? Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, alright, most of them are made and saying it, any further conversation? Here and see none, all in favor, raise hand and or aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Here and see none, most carries nationally six to zero, Ms. Ramos, you have your room.
Thank you.
Alright.
I am here back again.
You're next, Bob, you're about to throw ass, okay.
I am requesting board approval for the purchase of Panorama Education for the twenty-three twenty-four school year. At a cost of nineteen thousand sixty-two dollars for three years, so total of fifty-seven, totals at the bottom. Uh Panorama's success is a platform that I use in a previous school district. And it embodies a lot of components that we will use in our district uh to make it. To increase our success, um it takes information from Skyward and we can see us today for our school. Uh so when you ask me for information, I can bring it up quickly, attendance, academics, behavior, and most importantly, our SEL. Um I'm looking to solidify our SEL specialists, so they have a clearer vision of what we're doing in in our schools, K twelve. Um this platform has lessons, in SEL lessons that are aligned with Castle. Uh some trainings that they would take also, and then once they work with groups, they would be entering information. That we can see district wide and we can see where our spots are that we need to hit. Uh this will also align with our work in our E M L S S process that we are working through. And uh Director of Teaching and Learning and I will delve into this uh with our staff. This will be purchased with. Our Coordinator's Early Intervening Services Fund, which was set aside last school year and set to expire September thirtieth. So if we don't use it, we lose it.
Okay, I guess my question is, is when I was reading this in relationship to this. And you specialize in it for tier two and tier three, but it's also made for tier one. So my question was gonna be to Dr. Glass, so would this be something potentially, instead of just being able to do it under special education? Would this be something, especially because it coordinates with the other programs that we have? Would this be something that would be great for us to be able to utilize district wise for tier one, tier two, and tier three? To be able to pull up all the information for all of our students regardless of. Uh whether it's this SEL, all of these different things that connects with Skyward and all the rest of these different things. So my question was gonna be, is this Dr. Glass, as as well as. Would this be something that could be utilized district wide for all of ours, for all of our students?
It will be used district wide for all of our students, for all tiers.
Okay, cause I thought this was actually just for tier two and tier three that we were uh trying to do this for, for the nineteen thousand.
Well, the platform itself for these three years will cost this amount and I'm using.
So we can use as many, it can, we can use as many slots as available? Or is it a resort for, or is it every year you only have X amount of slots?
For three years, this is our platform that we will use, district wide for all students, tier one, tier two, tier.
Oh, it's not, so it's just for three years and stuff, so we're gonna use this for tier one, tier two, and tier three.
Particularly when it comes to the S A, um the SEL.
That was my part where I was really focusing on, cause when I sat there and I read through it, I was like, great, 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 great. Well, why wouldn't we use it for the tier one students as well too, because of those lessons in the SEL? As well as being able to pull up all of these other different records and then at any teacher's fingertips to be able to pull up. So that was gonna be my question in relationship to that and asking Dr. Glass, is this something, you know, would, that we could actually utilize district wise?
Ready to um present a plan that Director Ramos, in order to what you will see. Is that we have a tier system for tier one, tier two, two, three, and how we are supporting them through a E M L S S plan. So um some of that work will be done through our social workers, through state groups. Some of that work will be done by outside um agencies, like the Jewish Community Center, we have Rogers Partners. And so what we're trying to do is align each product and align each consultant intentionally. With specific tiers, so that we can track that and we can respond to data and provide the best services for students.
Cool, that's what I was looking, I was asking, I was looking for, it sounds good. Any other board members have questions in relationship to uh uh to the system?
So just um a clarifying point with cost. So you said that we have funds now that we need to use by the end of the year that will cover these first three years. So then after the first three years, we have to look at securing funds or making sure that they were allocated for, okay.
Board members, any other questions in relationship to this uh this new system that we can implement?
Well, the implementing of this new system, I took a moment um earlier today and went out and Googled this panorama. Educational, and so I was able to listen to about a three-minute video.
Three minutes, four seconds.
Yeah, you did the same thing and and it, one of the things that stood out and and you're listening and talking about it in your memo here. Is that it basically supports the whole child, um and so my question is. Do we have platforms that we are currently using that we would be able to eliminate? By the uses of this new platform that is ultimately supporting everything from academics. To behavior, to attendance, um and their total wellbeing. Are there platforms that we're currently using that we would not need to use any longer? Because it's all going to be supported in this one platform.
So this platform serves as a like a gatekeeper, it re- it takes information from Skyward, it takes information from um Bass Bridge. All its information and it comes out to us, yes, so that it'll turn a child based on their scores. Let's say attendance, academics, SEL, turn them green, and we know we're doing great for that child. It'll tell us where we, the the risk, orange and red, and where we need to form groups. So we still need the other platform, this is just the one where it will house it and collect all our data, all our data. So that when there are questions and we have questions during our E L M S S process that we have answers to. And we can collect that data at our fingertips, because it's all brought in there for us.
Alright, great, thank you so much for that.
Alright, alright, so anyone, any other questions? I hear and say no, would someone like to make a motion?
Dr. Vito, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of Panorama Education. For the twenty twenty-three twenty-four school year at an annual cost of nineteen thousand sixty-three dollars.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Peterson, motion has been made, do we have a second? So all I do is just look down, I'll be like, okay. Alright, motion has been made, a second and any other further conversation and or discussion?
I I I'm sorry, I just thought after I read that motion. Is this, are we signing a three-year contract right now for the fifty-seven, so should that have been what the motion is for?
Well, but we're doing it for this school year for the nineteen.
So nineteen thousand.
For nineteen dollars.
But are we signing a three-year contract right now?
Yeah, so we need to, you know what, so let's make the motion to approve the personal panorama education for twenty-three through that be twenty-six? Twenty-six? Alright, through the twenty-six school year, so let's make them, let's change the motion. For the full amount, yep, and and give it an annual.
Eighty-nine, so should I?
Fifty-seven?
One eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay, so should I just make?
We're gonna, we're gonna change the motion, so there we go.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
We, we we did, okay, all I gotta do is just say.
Either recede it or make a friendly amendment.
We can make the amendment to it.
Okay, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. To approve the purchase of the Panorama Education for three years from twenty twenty-three. Through twenty twenty-six at an, at a cost of fifty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-nine.
Alright, alright, motion has been made, do we have a second? Alright, motion has been made, a second, any uh discussion or conversation? Here and see none, all in favor, raise hand and or aye? Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, most carries nationally six to zero. Ms. Ramos, you actually came in here and got two of them all upon us, hadn't seen you in years. Alright, alright, let's move forward, thank you very much for that presentation, alright, um. Oh, I think we're down here to uh six. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay, discussion of the Brown Deer School District Staff Survey, Dr. Kelsey Brown or would that be Dr. Glass? Yeah, okay, yes.
Can you provide context?
Oh, I can, okay, so in relation to the staff survey. Uh you know, we we wanna be able to understand and we wanna be able to know what our T R, our teachers are feeling in relationship to our our client man. How they feeling about the education part, supervision, programming, all of those different things. So what we need to do is have a staff survey to be able to anonymous staff survey. Because we want people to be honest and let us know exactly how they're feeling in relationship to uh you know, this school year and kind of what we've got going on. And everything like that, so wanna be able to potentially have a survey to go out to staff. Like you like said before, unanimous, in order, you're not. Anonymous, five times real fast and spell backwards. But um and being able to do that, so that we can kind of get a gauge of how our 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 staff is actually feeling. And you know, hopefully, we get all thumbs up on everything, that would be great, wouldn't it? Uh we get all thumbs up, but if there are some issues or some things that we can look at, you know. We we need to be able to do those things and stuff to be able to uh clarify, make make. Make some changes if we need to make some changes and do some things in order to uh to tighten some things up. So uh that is the reason for the looking at trying to have a staff survey, uh being able to come through. I know that we've had, Dr. Kelsey Brown, you just did one. But it was uh it was one that was based upon, was seated playing and it was two questions.
Oh, each um, let me back up for a moment, uh each building principal has amended administered. Um a survey uh to their staff, high school, middle school, and elementary school. So they they have sent out, I mean, they took proactive and sent out surveys on their own, uh so we do have that data. Um and in alignment with our strategic planning, um with the training that we had with uh Ted Maitke. Uh what he promotes is um creating a survey around a specific problem. And it's essentially what is how we were trained in this new strategic planning process. So what we did last week, um on Friday, our P O day is, I should have brought my elephants, but we had a little, probably elephant, the elephant in the line. Sometimes people wanna share information with you, but they won't tell you verbally, I understand that.
So when she said the elephant thing, I was really looking like, I was like, oh, you really use elephants?
So with that, uh yeah, I had a couple of people come up to me, they said they were offended by that, but you know, we keep moving. That being said, um so every um staff member, e- well, everybody across the district um engaged in this exercise. Um and essentially what we asked, or what I asked them, what I asked our staff to do was write their building, the name of their building at the top of the elephant. And um on one side of the elephant, they would, but you know, we want our staff to tell us, tell us what you need to tell us. So um it was very open-ended, um and so um the idea was to tell us uh one thing that's working well in your building. And one thing um on on one side, and then one thing you need, you feel like we need to improve upon on the other side. About the elephants back there in my office, uh the ideas that will go through that information with the principals. Um to figure out what the recurring themes are um around those elements, there's no, no names are on them, only building, um building titles. Uh subsequent to that, we also want to know and understand um areas on what's working at the district level. And areas improvement at the district level and and so um we also ask for that information as well. So whether it's regarding, you know, me superintendent or payroll or H R or whatever. Um we also provided that opportunity for our staff. Um interestingly enough, we just did it last Friday, so we haven't had an opportunity to go through that information yet. Um and I would um suggest that information coupled with the principals have already put out. And um I think our teachers have been most appreciative um to the superintendent's office hours that have has taken place in the buildings. Um our, you know, teachers are grateful and thankful for that opportunity to have that one to one. And I've also been able to glean um some information from teachers who were um willing to take advantage of that opportunity. And as I said, the high school, um I will be meeting with the high school or high school teachers who have emailed me so far. And again, um it's been one Thursday, so.
So then with all of those things being mentioned, do we necessarily need another survey? Or can we just get data from what's already been done?
That would be my recommendation, um I. I I feel as though we have more than enough data to be able to glean um from our staff and our three buildings. And again, including the district, you know, what any concern might be um that we can come together and develop what these recurring themes might be. Uh and figure out what we need to do to address, and so so we have data.
What are the questions though? I mean, okay, you said the principals put something out, what were the questions that the principals put out?
I I don't have that. I, I don't have that information with me at this uh, at this. This time, I can, you know, I can bring that information back.
So did the principals get together and put together? Questions or did each principal come up with their own questions? Did the questions come through back, so the questions that they asked, did they come to you and potentially Dr. Glass? To be like, hey, these are good questions to be able to ask, or did you just let the principals? Come up with their own stuff and?
Was actually took the initiative, uh, when I knew anything, they were. Administering the survey, uh, which is fine, I'm not a psychometrician, so, you know, there are people who specialize in, you know, in. And, and doing that, um, knowing our principals, I would like to believe that they asked appropriate questions based on what, you know, teachers' experiences have been.
And they were anonymous, right, and they were anonymous?
The.
The principal ones were, I know you said the ones that you sent out were anonymous. I'm wondering, are the principal ones, are they anonymous, no? I'm, I'm, I'm looking at teachers saying no.
Um, two of them were, one of them did collect email.
I, this has kind of been my experience when. I have to put my name on something and I give it to my boss or whatever have you, you might not get the. True, the true thing on what I'm saying, otherwise I, either I don't answer it or I do this shining. Thing which means nothing or whatever, um, that's the reason why I was asking. We know what the questions were, hopefully they were anonymous, so then that way teachers would feel, or any staff person, including the staff people here in administration, they would feel. Open enough to be like. You know, tell us kind of what's going on, like I said before, I think we got a good thing going on, so it's probably. It, everything should be pretty good, so.
Yeah, there's another side to that coin though, um, then anonymous could. You could give us false information, like you could tell us something that really. I, I think it's too sad for that coin, you anonymous can go either way, I will be fully transparent and very honest, or. I'm gonna put you on blast because I'm a lot of anonymous and that's what I can do, I mean, this, this is a reality.
Right, I always just think that, you know what, we've always got to give individuals the opportunity to be able to. Be able to, to do that part.
Anytime people fill out a survey, they have an expectation that there will be results, so I was just wondering like what kind of timeframe these were viewed, because nothing worse. If I work somewhere and we fill out surveys all the time, we're gonna, nothing happens, what, what do you need to change around here? Nothing happens, that's very frustrating as an employee, so there has to be some kind of ample timeframe where. Things are established and then results are, are said so that people know I've been heard. And if that doesn't happen, then a point of another survey or the survey we've already done, it's just not worth it, they're not, they're not gonna do it because they're not seeing results.
Absolutely. Sorry, one hundred percent, that has to be like. Priority, I, I would say, so at least. Fourteen days of school left. Right. Um, the goal is to work through the summer and as we plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. To have that information and be able to come back and say, what is it that we did or how did we, to what those. With those needs and concerns, it's not gonna happen to be, it's not gonna happen before school year is over, I can tell you. Graduations and field trips and. It's, it's not a reasonable request.
But doing, and I wasn't.
Wrong way.
Poor school was up, up, certainly before the next school year, so, or anything, I mean, thinking about doing another survey. What questions would you ask that were different than the ones we already asked, to give what kind of results do you want to get?
So the goal was. And I talked to Dr. Glass and. Doctor, uh, Ms. Ramos said that the goal is to work with the principals to find dates. And work with the principals in the summer to prepare and plan for what that should look like for a twenty-three, twenty-four. Okay, so.
All right.
One of the things that we talked about during the um. During the strategic planning session is that they talked about when you. You're gonna always have people that are gonna be on this spectrum, you're gonna have some people that no matter what, they're never happy. And some people who are innovators, and some people who are um. You know, they just kind of watch and see what's happening, they really don't have a, an opinion about anything. And then you have another group that just kind of waits to see what everybody else is saying, and then they kind of jump forward to. So I guess my point is for the purpose of a survey. If we are looking for specific themes or whatever, maybe asking questions that are a little bit more. Um, targeted, that would be less biased or, or specific, keep, specifically. Get to what it is that we're trying to fix or create or change or, because we've.
Or celebrate.
Right, right, or celebrate, what are our joys, what are our concerns, but. More targeted questions, let's say for instance, if the issue is um, climate. Instead of, and then how you. How you formulate a question is also important, because when you're thinking about climate. You can put a spin on it where it can get to positive answers or where it can get to, to negative answers. And so I'm really always concerned about surveys because they can be skewed if you're not. Specifically targeting what you're trying to fix, if there's programming. Instead of maybe saying, what do you think is really crappy about the programming at Brown Deer, maybe. What type of programming do you think can help us to be a more excellent place? Instead of climate, what do you think is crappy about Brown Deer? Maybe formulating a question to say, what are some things that you would institute? Let's look at how we can make things better versus coming up with, excuse my language, a witch session, I didn't check, say where. A witch session. I'm so tired of the witch sessions. You know, even at graduation this weekend, I met some people who were off campus. That was telling me things that people said about. Brown Deer. I'm so tired of hearing them joke. You know, and it was, this time it was blaming the parents. Okay, so my thing is, is that I think we're supposed to be cheerleaders. And we're supposed to be, what, what did the president say? Not what we can do for what he, what the government could do for our community. Or for our nation, but what we can do, so if we're gonna do a survey, I would love to see a survey that's looking at. Climate, programming, supervision, um, management or whatever, but how? Do you think we can do a better job, that's it?
It's the reason why I was asking, well, I guess Dr. Glass, uh, Ms. Ramos, did you guys see any of these questions that went out to the staff?
I did not, but I wanted to offer that, um, all three principals that are in attendance with Dr. Nitski as we have been instructed to do. Surveys around our problems of practice and then. How to take those surveys and do a theme through line. And align that with our strategic plan work, so as I met with principals today. We made an agreement that when it came to our. New teachers orientation as well as our welcome back orientation, that we would be intentional about. The topics and the things that we will address academically and also culturally, and so I have confidence that with. This leadership team, that we will guide that work will be intentional and impactful, where teachers can look and say. Hey, I can see that my leadership has listened and responded to.